All right, we are live.
Okay, thank you, and I would like to call to order the wow, January 12th meeting of the common council. We have a quorum of Ms. King, would you please read the statement and call the roll?
This meeting, you want to salute the flag first, Mayor?
Thank you. Please rise and join me in saluting in the flag of our great nation.
I pledge allegiance of the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We get a little out of practice. So now clerk, please read the statement and call the roll.
Meeting is being recorded for rebroadcast. We ask everyone to speak clearly one at a time. Please state your name when called upon by the presiding chair. Members of the public can access this meeting by telephone, Zoom, and/or the City of Norwalk YouTube channel. Mr. Burnett.
President.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Langella. Mr. Sachinelli.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Huberman.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Ms. Revolus.
Present.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Mr. Kides.
Here.
Mr. Theoretis.
Here.
Mr. Keegan.
Here.
Mr. Serenites.
Here.
Mr. Livingston.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan.
Here.
Fourteen present, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes for the regular meeting of December 8th, 2020. Do I have a motion? Ms. Shanahan, any corrections, deletions, omissions? Additions? Seeing none, all in favor of approval of the minutes as submitted? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is public participation. Mr. Manzi, do we have anybody that is signed on to speak to the council?
Yes, we have two people from the public. One person has their hand raised. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand electronically, and I will unmute you. The first person we have is Diane Lorachella. Diane?
Good evening, Mayor and common council and staff. For the record, my name is Diane Lorachella at 21 Blue Mountain Ridge Road. Just a little while ago, many, several of you were on a really important and, and really heart, heartfelt vigil. Several on this Zoom call tonight vowed to sit down and talk with people to learn and, and in a very civil manner to learn about each other and to sort out and find resolution. But what I find tonight that is disappointing is I'm, I'm here tonight to speak on, under Public Works, item A7, amongst other things, but I'm just going to speak to A7. That has to do with the yard waste contract. As I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of the Norwalk Zero Waste Coalition. This coalition does never feels that we will have zero waste in our society, and that includes things such as leaves and yard waste. We're trying to reduce the waste streams that go through to save taxpayer money, to improve our carbon footprint, and to also find a way to help people understand how they too, at home and in their businesses, reduce their waste streams, to reduce the cost to the taxpayer so those monies could be used for better purpose. I do know that the contract, I'm assuming, will be to cart leaves and, and the stumps, things that were listed in the, in the item on the agenda, to the tune of not to exceed $275,000. That's in excess of a quarter million dollars. Now, to my knowledge, and I have been around the city since city carding contract was first brought into our city, when they had a privatization of trash hauling, and it was quite unique and worrisome that this particular company got a recycling contract in a no bid situation. In other words, none of you, if you were on the council at the time, could look at that particular contract. At the time, the city council, several Democratic council people who were in the minority, requested that the contract that they had in their hand be sent back to committee for further discussion. But you will find tonight, to my knowledge, no such contract was available for either council or for the public to view. That is highly irregular. It bypasses transparency, and whether or not Mr. Carr was told by the staff that it's regular for him to bypass public scrutiny on a quarter million dollar project, he is incorrect. So the reason why, briefly, I'll, I'll wind up now, is because we can manage our leaves and stumps in a better manner. And I feel that definitely we need to cart some of the leaves out of town to a composter, which fulfills our recycling goals with the state of Connecticut, but we also can reduce even this amount with looking at areas where we could do backyard composting with an education program, where we could actually explore smaller mini composting areas so that we at least have some compost coming back and, and create for our parks, which could use rich compost. We have to start looking at our waste streams in a much more holistic way, and this does not. It is out of sight, out of mind, and I ask that you send this back to committee to have a truly informed decision making. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Thank you, Ms. Lorachella. Anybody else? Mr. Manzi?
No, no, Mayor, we do not have anyone else.
Ms. King, do you have anybody who has submitted comments?
Nothing.
Does any councilperson have any comments from any constituent that they feel should be read into the record? Seeing none, we will close public session, public participation. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, resignations and appointments. We have five, I'm sorry, six reappointments tonight. We have for the Conservation Commission, a reappointment of Matt Pence and Ed Hollowico. Do I have a motion? Mr. Kides moves?
Yes, I think I'd like to move the names, Matt Pence and Ed Hollowico. I haven't had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Pence, but I've known Mr. Hollowico for many years, and he, his dedication and his efforts, I've learned, not just here on the, excuse me, Conservation Committee, but in other aspects. And over the years, I've also learned about, about what conservation does, and they've, they've actually a wide array of, of tasks from flooding issues in Norwalk and a variety of other things, and it's very interesting stuff that they're doing, and I know they're doing a great job at it. So that being said, I'd like to now move those two names.
Thank you, Mr. Kides. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have four appointments or reappointments to the Board of Assessment Appeals. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make that motion.
Ms. Smith makes the motion. Ms. Smith?
Yes, I would like to move all four reappointments to the Assessment Board of Appeals. Doris Ash, Joe Dupre, Judy Hires, and Jane Ready all have been serving on the Assessment Board of Appeals and have been doing a very fine job, serving a very important role to our residents. Additionally, they are all four involved in other aspects of community service with their houses of worship, and we really appreciate their service, and they deserve to be reappointed, so I would like to move their names.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, the mayor's remarks. Talk a little bit tonight, very briefly, about the vaccine program that's being administered by the City of Norwalk. First, we have started a vaccine ad hoc committee, which is going to be focusing on two elements. Number one, we're going to be focusing on making sure that wherever we administer the vaccine and the team that's going to be involved and the volunteers that are going to be involved, that we have the, the necessary resources to make sure that the vaccine is administered with efficiency and effectively. We're also making sure that we have locations that we can use that are comfortable, large enough, and located in areas where we can reach the most number of people. That's the number one. That's the logistics side. The other side would be the communication side. We want to make sure that we put out accurate information for the vaccine to the public for several reasons. Number one, so that they can make an informed decision as to whether or not they want to receive the vaccine. We also want to make sure that they know how to go about registering. We've recently learned today that there are, there's quite a bit of misinformation relative to the vaccine and what phase and so forth. The City of Norwalk will be following the state guidelines for Phase 1, 1A, 1B, and making sure that we follow those guidelines as we administer the vaccine. There was some information about advanced registration being put out. On Thursday, the day after tomorrow, there will be an opportunity for people in Phase 1A to pre-register. That will be people over 75 years of age, and as we move forward, people in Phase 1B will be gradually added in. The registration system will be an online registration system, the Vaccine Administration Management System, otherwise known as VAMS, and there will be a website where people can go on and, and register. It will also be monitored over social media. You can get information through social media. As soon as information, final information and more accurate information is available, we will be communicating that to the general public. So we want to make sure that everybody is, has an understanding of the vaccine process and how they can go ahead and get vaccine when they are in the proper eligible level. So if there are any questions, we can, you can contact the city website, the, the Department of Health, the City Norwalk Department of Health will have information as well, as well as the customer service line. Tomorrow, Connecticut Food Bank will be holding a food distribution event, January 13th, at Cat Pasture Beach from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The parking area at Cat Pasture Beach will remain closed to the public. Those who wish to use the beach can park in Shady Beach. The, the, this will allow any person to come in and pick up food. It'll be a no contact kind of event where the volunteers will be placing food directly in the trunk or the back part of vehicles, and we know that several of the council people here have volunteered. We certainly appreciate that. Anybody wishing to volunteer can go down to the beach tomorrow morning. I'm sure they'll be glad to have your help. That's all I have, so thank you very much, and Mr. Sachinelli, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, under the Council President's remarks, I'd like to read a statement prepared by the group into record in response to the recent events that are, happened at our nation's capital. The reasons follows. "We, the common council of the City of Norwalk, Connecticut, condemn the acts of violence that occurred in our nation's capital on January 6th, 2021. This seditious behavior of the mob of rioters on that day endangered our national leaders and ravaging our most sacred symbol of democracy, the Capitol Building, has no place in our free and open society. All those who took part in, or with, took part in or incited this insurrection should be brought before our justice system and made to answer for their part in this heinous act." So that was prepared by the group in response. There was a lot of thought put into that one, and I 100% agree with the sentiment of this statement. With that being read into record, I actually have the pleasure of reading the consent calendar tonight, so I guess I'll jump right into it. Item A1, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Relling to execute any and all documents necessary for the following transaction per the joint memorandum of Jessica Casey, Steve Kleppen, Anthony Carr, Vanessa Valideres dated 20, November 24th, 2020. A1I, for the City of Norwalk to convey the following easement to Sono TOD LLC for consideration of $129,233.0. At item A1, I'm sorry, no, that's correct. A driveway easement approximately 7,424 square feet is depicted in the easement map depicting proposed driveway easement over land of the City of Norwalk, 30 Monroe Street, prepared for Sono TOD LLC, 1 Chestnut Street, Norwalk, Connecticut, scale 1 inch to 20 feet, dated November 24th, 2020. William W. Seymour and Associates PC revised to include the 328 square feet of Chestnut Street to be, to be conveyed from Sono TOD LLC to the City of Norwalk, authorizing agenda item 3II. Item A2, a ramp easement approximately 759 square feet is depicted in the easement map depicting proposed ramp easement over land of City of Norwalk, 30 Monroe Street, prepared for Sono TOD LLC, 1 Chestnut Street, Connecticut, scale of 1 inch to 20 feet, dated November 24th, 2022, William S. Seymour Associates PC. Item AA3, a sidewalk easement approximately 2,129 square feet plus 179 square feet is depicted in easement map depicting a pro, proposed sidewalk easement over land of City of Norwalk, 30 Monroe Street, prepared for Sono TOD LLC, 1 Chestnut Street, Norwalk, Connecticut, scale 1 inch to 20 feet, dated November 24th, 2020, William W. Seymour Associates PC. And A3 dot 2, for Sono TOD LLC to convey the following easement to City of Norwalk for consideration of $1, a sidewalk easement approximately 656 square feet plus 183 square feet, as depicted in the easement map depicting proposed sidewalk easement granted to the City of Norwalk, 30 Monroe Street, over the land of Sono TOD LLC, 1 Chestnut Street, Norwalk, Connecticut, scale 1 inch to 20 feet, dated November 20, 24th, 2020, William W. Seymour and Associates PC. Item A3 dot 3, for the City of Norwalk to acquire free simple title from Sono TOD LLC into approximate 328 square feet of land of 1 Chestnut Street is depicted in the compilation plan depicted conveyance parcel to be conveyed to the City of Norwalk, Sono TOD LLC, 1 Chestnut Street, Norwalk, Connecticut, scale 1 inch to 20 feet, dated November 24th, 2020, William W. Seymour Associates PC. Item 3 dot 2, reauthorize the conveyance of compensatory mitigation easement to the State of Connecticut concerning 185 Liberty Square and 15 and 60 South Smith Streets. Items, item 7C23 in September 22, 2020, common council agenda is permit, permit easement. Item 33, authorize the Mayor Harry to be willing to enter into a temporary right of entry agreement with the Department of Transportation to enter over a certain portion of 10 North Water Street for construction access, storage of materials and equipment staging purposes and connection with Project 0301-17-Walkbridge Replacement. Item 8, A4, authorize the Chief of Operations and Public Works to execute orders on contract during construction, Inc., to Project PM 2019.1 Pavement Management Program for amount not to exceed $500,000, accounts noted. Item A5, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Relling to execute an agreement between the City of Norwalk and T and Bond, Inc., for Project DPW 2020, 2020-1 Construction Inspection Observation Services. The agreement is for a period of one year billable on the hourly basis for some not to exceed $325,000, with an option to extend two additional terms for one year each. Accounts noted. Item A6, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Relling to execute an agreement with Clean Harbors Environment Service, Inc., for Project 4079 Household Hazardous Waste Collection for some not to exceed $30,000. Account noted. Item A8, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Relling to execute an agreement with DP, DW Transport and Leasing, Inc., for Project 4078 Transportation and Disposal of street sweeping, catch basin grit, excavating material and broken structural concrete for the sum not to exceed $150,000. Account noted. B, Recreation and Parks and Cultural Affairs. Item BA1A, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Relling to enter into a contract with Classic Turf Company LLC for Project Number 4073 Bryan McMahon High School Tennis Court for some not to exceed $435,000, base bid of $400,000, add alternate 1 dash draining work of $35,000. Account noted. Item B1B, authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to execute, execute the change order on contract with Classic Turf Company LLC for Project Number 4073 Bryan McMahon High School tennis carts for sums not to exceed $43,500. Account noted. Item B2A, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Relling to enter into a contract with Diamond Landscape and Athletic Fields for Project Number 4072 Cat Pasture Beach softball fields renovation for some not to exceed $43,524. Account noted. Item 2B, to, item B2B, authorize the Director of Recreation and Park to execute change order on contract with Diamond Landscape and Athletics Field for Project Number 4072 Cat Pasture Beach Softball Fields renovation for some not to exceed $4,352. Accounts noted. Items C1, accept and approve the report of claims committee dated December 10, 2020. Item C2, for informational purposes only, narrative on tax collection dated December 10th, 2020. Item C3, for information purpose only, monthly tax collector's report dated November 2020. Item C4, authorize the common council hereby approve and adopt the revised building permit fee schedule approved by the Building Board of Appeals at its March 9th, 2020 public meeting. Copy of revised building permit fee schedule enclosed. Item C5, action requested November 2020, authorize an additional $20,253 per year as a contingency of claim frequency in any one year exceeds historical average for an authorized total of $125,000 per year and authorize an additional $35,759 for the three-year contract term for a total three-year total cost of $350,000. Previous action requested earlier, earlier this year, action requested authorize the Mayor Harry, Harry Relling to execute a contract for management and administration of the city workers' compensation and heart and hypertension program for three-year period, beginning July 1st, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2023, at a cost per claim based on the following schedule, report only claims, $27 per claim cost, medical only claims, $250 per claim cost, indemnity claims of $1,175 per claim cost, and heart and hypertension claims of $1,175 per claim cost. Total estimated annual amount is $104,747, and total estimated three-year cost is $314,241. Accounts noted. Item D1, approve the following revision and amendments to City Code Section 32-8 of the City Code, Chapter 32-4, Conflicts of Interest, Interference with Duties, Prohibited Interests and Exceptions. And that is the consent call calendar. I will call a roll call vote.
Can you repeat that?
The whole thing? Counselor Greg D. Burnett.
Aye.
Dominique Johnson.
Yes.
Manny Langella is absent. Nicholas Sachinelli, aye. Barbara Smith.
Yes.
David Huberman.
Aye.
Kadim Roberts.
Aye.
Diana Revolus.
Aye.
Darlene Young.
Yes.
John Kides.
Yes.
George Theoretis.
Yes.
Thomas Keegan.
Yes.
George Serenites.
Yes.
Tom Livingston.
Yes.
And Lisa Shanahan.
Yes.
Excellent. It's unanimous. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sachinelli. Great job, and I want to just add to the mayor's comments, and I want to thank Mr. Burnett for reminding me. This coming Monday is Martin Luther King Day. Yesterday, I reached out to Bruce Morris and Reverend Lindsay Curtis to see if there were going to be any citywide services that we could attend. They said that at this, today, I got a call from Reverend Ingram, who indicated that there will be no services now because of the pandemic and bringing people together and the limitations on gatherings and things. However, they're hopeful that in the spring, or if necessary, in the summer, they will have a fundraising for the Martin Luther King Scholarship Foundation, which is the beneficiary of the Martin Luther King Day citywide ceremonies that we have every year at City Hall. So I would encourage all the council people and others that Martin Luther King Day, we look at it as a day on, not a day off, and a day when we can perform random acts of kindness in the name and in the legacy of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. We will keep you advised as to what develops relative to any citywide services that we will be having at a later date. So again, thank you, Mr. Burnett, for bringing that to my attention. I know that as we get out of sorts and out of step with certain things that we normally do, we miss things, and I appreciate you bringing that to my attention. Okay, the next item now is Mr. Serenites, item 7A.
Seven. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 7A7, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Relling to execute an agreement with City Carding, Inc., for Project 4077 Transportation and Disposal of Yard Waste Material for some not to exceed $275,000. Account noted. With us tonight, we have Mr. Carr and Mrs. Palladino, who can both speak on any, or answer any questions and speak on the site.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, good evening, everybody. Just to give a little bit of background to this RFP, this is a three-year RFP with an option of two one-year extensions. This RFP was discussed at Public Works Committee, so just to address comments from earlier. Everybody is correct. The, the backup was not included in the, in the council package, but that was not, it wasn't intentional. I did review this with staff, and we did review this at Public Works Committee. We will be emailing a copy of the RFP and the bid tab relation tomorrow. The contract that's included in the RFP is only a sample contract. If this gets approved tonight, the law department would prepare an actual contract, so that's why there's no contract included. It's noted, we will include the bid tab relations next time, but again, this contract really is only for the removal of brush, leaves, logs and stumps, and wood chips, and then this year we added an item for storm and/or disaster debris. I mean, those are the basic items, so there's no, there wasn't any magic to it. There wasn't anything that was not being done transparent. I think that, I've been here long enough that I'm sure the mayor and the council knows that I don't operate in a silo and under the guise of not being transparent. Again, next time in the future, we will include it, but this was discussed at Public Works Committee, and this wasn't really a, a highly complex contract, which is why we didn't include the backup. So it wasn't done to, to not show the full, the full picture of the prices that you're going to see for brush, leaves, logs and stumps, and wood chips, and also the storm and disaster debris. So, and also to circle back on another point. You know, the, the August 4th storm was, was, was pretty intense event in the city, and, you know, the crew did work, operations staff did work tirelessly from August 4th to August 10th, but that, that cleanup did go from August 4th to at least October 10th, to be honest with you, and the total cost approximately to remove that storm debris, to collect and dispose, was about $652,000, and that included staff, regular time, that was overtime, that was equipment usage, and that was the cost of the contractual off-site hauling, which we did have two haulers, DW Transport, which currently has our contract, and City Carding, whom you know. During the storm, City Carding was very efficient and was able to provide more trucks and trailers at a quicker pace to get the 2,600 tons of storm debris that was collected during that time period as quickly as it came. As quickly as it came in, they were able to get it offsite. DW did help too. And again, they might have had prior obligations or maybe just lesser resources at the time, which everybody was strained, so it's no, no, no slight towards them. But City Carting did come through when we needed them during that storm event, and they were the lowest bidder, which you'll see in the bid tab. So there's no magic to it. The straight numbers, I'm very confident in City Carting's ability. They demonstrated what they could do during the August Fort Storm. And as you know, they are garbage and recycling hauler, but that contract is up in July of 2023, and we will be issuing a new RFP for that in the future. But that's a separate, separate matter for a separate discussion. So I mean, that's, that, that's, that's really the, the crux of it. We're confident that City Carting could perform the duties of this contract. Again, the contract that for the brush leaves, logs and stumps and wood chips was always separate from the other contract that was on consent, which is the construction debris, like the concrete blocks, cinder, that kind of stuff, catch basin cleanings. Those contracts were always separate. They were merged into 1 contract under the current vendor DW several years ago, because the, the low bidder, DW was the low bidder for the yard waste contract and for the construction debris and catch basin cleaning. So at the approval of the law department and the purchasing department, they allowed us to combine the both contracts, 2 separate RFPs into 1 contract, because it was the same vendor, didn't need to have 2 different contracts. It was decided at the time, which predated me, but just to give you a little bit of background. And this year, in the RFP, you'll see for the yard waste removal, we did add a new item in there that wasn't in there from prior similar RFPs for storm and/or disaster debris. So it's a, it's a special item now, where we could actually spell out how much the contractor will charge us to remove yard waste rather than negotiate a price during the time of the event. So, and regarding the first comment about the yard waste, I don't disagree. Everybody could be doing things a little bit more efficiently, but I'd like to caveat that with it's, it's much different during an emergency event, when people are tired and we're on the receiving end of, of the hundreds of emails that have, that have, that came in about, when is it going to get picked up? Can I bring stuff to the site? Why is it still here? And the biggest complaint was about having the paper trash bags that you had to put the, the yard waste in the, in the bags, because DW wouldn't collect it with the bags. City Carting will take the bags. So if there's the same event, got the bid in the future, they'll take the bags, they'll take everything, you don't have to separate it. So it'll be less hassle on the residents, also a little bit easier for us operationally to deal with. But that, that was, you know, I like to think that that could be excluded during a disaster, because that's not what we're thinking about at the time. The objective during the disaster is to respond and recover. So we, we did our best to take the debris out as fast, it was coming in faster than we can get it out, which is why the operation lagged until about October 10th. But just, I wanted to give a little bit of background that we have no problem and will certainly look at other opportunities, but I don't mind speaking to Ms. Larchello, as long as there's some plan in place about how this is going to be funded, the logistics, the execution, which, in short, when I had these discussions, those are the items, the, the logistics and the implementation are the items that are lacking. They come in very conceptual, and then myself and my staff are told that it's your job to figure it out. That's not necessarily fair, but I, I, I'm open to ideas, but, but there needs to be some, some meat and some substance behind it. You know, where's the space coming from? Where's the funding coming from? How could this be implemented? You know, these ideas can't just come out of a quick shotgun start and then expect them to happen, you know, sooner rather than later. These things take time to plan and, and fund and then explain to the CFO, explain to the administration. I mean, there, there's, there's a multifaceted process here that I like to follow to stay, to stay organized. And it, and it would be a detriment to rush anything through without the mayor of the council really fully understanding the, the effects. So I just wanted to give a little bit of background about the August Fort Storm. These contracts, this certainly isn't a high-level contract. It's very important for the city. But as soon as you'll see the bid sheet, you'll see brush leaves, logs and stumps, wood chips and storm debris, and you'll understand, there's only 2 columns, 1 for DW Transport, 1 for City Carting, the numbers aside by side. But again, the contract wasn't provided because there is none now. But we will provide a copy of the RFP and the, the bid tabulation to show the 2 bidders tomorrow morning.
Mr. Serenitis. You're unmuted.
Yeah, I just unmuted myself. Thank you. Thank you, Anthony, for that very detailed and insightful breakdown. Are there any other questions from any of the other council members?
Mr. Keegan. You're muted.
About now. That worked?
Good.
I, I don't have a question. I have a statement. Sometimes you have to trust the integrity and expertise of your staff, and I believe that this is one of those occasions, and I have absolute total trust in Chief Carr's opinion on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. King, would you take a roll call vote? You have to unmute yourself first.
Got it. Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr., sorry, Mr. Satchinelli.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Hulman.
Aye.
Mr. Roberts.
Aye.
Mr. Ms. Revolus.
Aye.
Ms. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Kites.
Yes.
Mr. Theoretis.
Yes.
Mr. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Serenitis.
Yes.
Mr. Livingston.
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan.
Yes.
14 yeas. Unanimous vote.
Thank you very much.
Motion passes.
Item 7E1, Mr. Kites.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Item E1, authorize Mayor Harry W. Relling to execute an agreement with TPUDC to conduct an update of the zoning regulations for the amount not to exceed $190,040. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to move that and quickly speak to it.
Mr. Kites moved it. Mr. Kites, you have the floor.
Thank you. What we're here to do tonight is vote on contracting a company to revamp our zoning regulations, and I can say that's no easy task, and I want to commend Mr. Kleppen, our zone, planning and zoning director, to taking on this initiative. And also, we have him here with us tonight. Steve, would you mind just giving the council an update on on you, on this initiative and maybe speaking to what your plans are for public participation moving forward?
Sure, so may recall that when the citywide plan was adopted, this was one of the significant recommendations within that plan, something that I recognized when I first started with the city about 4 years ago, a little over 4 years ago, that the regulations themselves were in dire need of a complete makeover. They haven't been revamped holistically in over 30 years, so it's about time, I'd say, to do that. We consistently do things kind of on a piecemeal basis, responding to requests for changes and do those one at a time, so we think it's time to look at it from top to bottom. So we put out an RFP, got some responses back and interviewed several firms. TPUDC really did a great job with their presentation, had a clear plan on what they wanted to do. They've had work in the Northeast, in New York State, in other New England states, also down south, so they've got experiences in other parts of the country. But what really stuck out for them was their public participation and how they went about doing that. And when I did my reference checks afterwards, everybody, even without me asking them about that, was the first thing that they mentioned was that TPUDC really stood out in terms of how the, the public responded. And going into situations where there wasn't always broad support for things at the beginning, people felt that the process that they put forward was really well attended and well done. So that was a real big plus for the folks that interviewed, interviewed them. Now, things are a little up in the air at the moment, because, you know, traditionally, when we do these kind of projects, we're a lot of times around a table with different groups of folks talking to one another. Obviously, with COVID, we can't follow those same steps. Hopefully, by the time the project is over, we have an opportunity to meet in person again. But, you know, we're, we're prepared to go forward and do things in a virtual environment. They, they said they can, you know, revamp their style to, to handle that, so we're, we're prepared. We don't have a an outreach program formulated yet. We'll do that once they get on board, and that'll be one of the first things that we work on after the contracts get signed between their team and Corporation Council.
Back to you, Mayor.
Any further comments or questions? Mr. Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to add a couple words of support in favor of this item. We've been talking about for years about the need to review and revise our zoning regs. It's been a common issue. I think we've all heard from our constituents over and over through the years, so. And, and as Steve said, I know it's been a common theme of the POCD, so. You know, I think it's a great, idea, great effort. The effort's going to address, you know, the issues we've had, the ambiguities, inconsistencies, and hopefully, the end result, as, as the backup here says, will be a a real user-friendly set of revised regs. So I really want to commend Steve and his staff, as well as the mayor for commissioning this overall and to the the whole, the whole organization. I think this is really great and much needed.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. Further comments? Yeah, I too would like to thank Mr. Kites and the, the the planning committee for their hard work, and Mr. Kleppen, thank you. As Mr. Livingston said, this is something that has been needed for quite some time, and I think we're confident now that we have something in place that'll get, get this done, so thank you. Ms. King, would you take a roll call vote on item 7E1?
Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Langella, I'm sorry again. Satchinelli.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Hulman.
Aye.
Mr. Roberts. Ms. Revolus.
Aye.
Ms. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Kites.
Yes.
Mr. Theoretis.
Yes.
Mr. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Serenitis.
Yes.
Ms. Living, Mr. Livingston.
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan.
Yes.
14 votes you have.
Thank you, Carrie, unanimously. Does any council member have anything else they'd like to add, comments? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Roberts.
I do believe there is, we did speak about Mr. Martin Luther King Jr. and everything being canceled, but there is an actual essay contest for the high school students that I do want to bring.
Good point, yes. Could you bring that? Yeah, go ahead.
So basically, there's the Norwalk Library and all school systems and NAACP are teaming up with the Martin Luther King Essay Contest. And the deadline is this Thursday, and the, with that being said, it says each student may submit 1 entry. Being the deadline is this Thursday at 5:00 PM. The essay should be about the pillars of King's legacy focusing on one of the 3 themes, education, equality, environmental equality, and racial and justice equality. The essay should be 500 words or more for high schoolers, 300 words or more for middle schoolers, and elementary schools, 200 words. But I just want to bring that forth to everybody, and it is a cash prize, and the kids definitely could use it within this time now, so that's wonderful. First place winners receive 100, second place winners receive $50, and third place winners receive $25 according to the statement. And they will be judged, so we definitely want to encourage all the youth and those that are in school to definitely take this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Good point. Any other comments? Now we would accept a motion. Mr. Roberts.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. We are adjourned.